Bear with me for just one more minute as we get it started on Facebook. All right, welcome everybody. It is 5:31 on June 24th of 2020. Good evening, my name is Brendan O'Brien and I am the Community Development Specialist of the Broom County Industrial Development Agency. The agency is conducting a public meeting pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as CEICER, of which the process is outlined in Title VI of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations. Part 617 with statutory authority and enabling legislation under Article VIII of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law to seek public comment on the draft generic environmental impact statement, or DGIEIS, of the former BAE system site at 600 Main Street in the Town of Union, County of Broom, and State of New York. The agency is the lead agency with regard to this project and the acceptance of the DGIEIS by the agency does not infer any position on the approval or disapproval of the DGIEIS. No position will be taken by the agency until July 2nd of 2020, which is the day after the deadline for public comment. A copy of the DGIEIS scoping document is available for review at the offices of the agency during regular business hours. Notice that this public meeting was published in the Press and Sun Bulletin on June 5th of 2020. I request that each person wishing to speak, state his name, is her name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an entity or organization, please identify that entity or organization. The public meeting will remain open until 7:30 PM or until all parties have spoken their piece. I request the following documents be made a part of the record of this proceeding: the public meeting notice, the affidavit of publication, and the affidavit of posting. To provide a little bit more information, we are conducting a public meeting this evening to see public comment on the draft generic environmental impact study or statement for the BAE system site at 600 Main Street in the Town of Union, Broom County, New York. The agency began a planning and design process to redevelop the site in 2018 after it had been severely damaged in the September 2011 flood and property ownership was transferred to the agency. The 27-acre park soul has access to the interstate highway system, proximity to Binghamton University, and is adjacent to the Johnson City Health and Cultural District and the Johnson City I District. In collaboration with town, village, and county planning offices, state agencies, and local residents, three redevelopment scenarios have been prepared which incorporate green and gray infrastructure as well as technological solutions to increase resilience to flooding events. The primary goal of the generic environmental impact statement is to evaluate potentially significant adverse impacts related to the implementation of the site and is integral for informed decision-making. Typically, each developer would be responsible for conducting its own surveys and research, but this has been completed through the agency's GEIS process, which has improved the project's build-ready status and is compiled information necessary to promote and guide the fulfillment of the project. The DGIEIS is available at the offices once again for anybody's review. We are located at 5 South College Drive, Suite 201 in Binghamton, New York, 13905. All comments made at this public meeting will be transcribed by our reporter, also recorded and posted on our website as well as on Facebook Live currently, and presented to the agency's Board of Directors for the review prior to any decision on the application. We're going to have a brief presentation from Lisa Nagel at Elon, who's been conducting our redevelopment scenarios as well as the DGIEIS. And after that, I will request that anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing provide their name and address prior to speaking. And once again, if you are speaking on behalf of a group or an entity, please identify that group or entity. So after the presentation, I will unmute everybody and allow, one at a time, people be recognized and speak afterwards. So with that being said, I'm going to start presentation and pass this over to Lisa.
Thank you Brendan, are you going to bring up the presentation or would you like me to?
Working on it right now.
Perfect. Well, good evening everyone, my name's Lisa Nagel and I'm with Elon Planning and Design sitting in Saratoga Springs, New York. We've been working with the agency since 2018 to redevelop these 27 acres that were the former BAE system site at 600 Main Street in Westover, the Town of Union. Some of you may be familiar with this project as we've been going at it for a couple of years now. Over the last about eight months, we've been preparing what we call a generic environmental impact statement, a GEIS. It's a little over 100 pages, so we're, in this presentation, we're going to hit some of the highlights. As Brendan mentioned, it is available for review at the agency's office. We'll have some other information at the end of this presentation too, in terms of where you can find the document and when comments can be provided by. Go to the next slide, please. So, the purpose of this hearing is to is to give you some site history and some overview of the project and what some of you're probably familiar with, review some of our recent planning efforts, talk about the land transfer, and look at the master redevelopment scenarios. With those scenarios is what we conducted the CEICER process on, and we're going to hit some highlights of that CEICER, of those CEICER findings, and then we'll outline the next steps for you. Next slide, please. So, let's talk about the project. These pictures we've seen, many of us have seen in the newspapers and live this live. Obviously, it was an Air Force plant, previously GE, then the BAE site, then we have we have the site on the right when it was flooded in 2011, and the bottom picture is as the site exists today, and we'll go over some of the history. I do want to mention also on the phone and going to be presenting with me is Lisa Dolphin. As I look at that flood picture Lisa, I'm remembering you're on the line with us. Lisa Dolphin and Shoemaker and Rick White, formerly of Shoemaker, have been analyzing the flooding information, and we're going to have Lisa, because we know this is one of the primary areas of interest, Lisa's going to have a few slides to talk about the findings on the flood analysis. So, welcome Lisa. Next slide, please. So, the town has been looking at this site for some time, even before the 2011 flood, and looking at this area of Westover. The town has a comprehensive plan, there's a countywide comprehensive plan, there's a hazard mitigation plan, and then the Town of Union in 2015 did a long-term recovery plan, which was funded by the State of New York after Irene and Lee hit the southern pier. We used all of this information at the beginning of our efforts in studying what this site could be reused for, and it was informed by some of these efforts. Next slide, please. Just to familiarize yourselves with the land transfer, so the large red box at the southern part of, on Main Street cuts right through almost the center of that image, 17th Sea. Those are the 27 acres on the south of 17th Sea. That's the area that we're primarily talking about. The smaller reddish triangle, or red triangle on the north side is behind the Aldies in the shopping plaza. Both of those properties are owned by the agency currently. Our efforts are focused on the larger 27 acres on the south side of 17th Sea. Also, just of note, if you're familiar with that area, there is an earthen levee that runs down the eastern side of that 27 acres and the southern side of that 27 acres. The agency, working with us and the Air Force, and we also have been represented from the Air Force on the line with us tonight, have all been working together on preserving access to those levees so that the DEC can maintain the flood control systems there. Next slide, please.
Give me a second, there we go.
So, we were initially engaged by the agency to study the 27 acres, well, we looked at both sides of the street, but primarily the 27 acres study area, and we had many stakeholder meetings with key people through the town, Binghamton University, UHS, Johnson City, Westover Realtors in the area, and then we did other public outreach. Some of you may have attended some public meetings at the Town of Union Town Hall where we presented some initial findings that we have. We also did some market feasibility, so we had our economists on our team look at what could potentially be feasible or viable there, given the market conditions in the southern tier in Broom County and Binghamton area. And you'll see in a moment the redevelopment scenarios and that we were considering some retail space, though not a lot, some commercial office space. We also looked at a scenario of what we call industrial or flex space, or flexible space, some housing, and actually some hospitality or lodging, and I'll go into those in a moment when we look at the redevelopment scenarios. So we came up with three alternatives, evaluated them, went back to our stakeholders, went back to the public and shared this information. So there has been some vetting of this and some input by the agency and other members in the southern pier. So, there's the pictures of us at work, hard at work, and the southern, and the bottom picture is one of the meetings at the Town Hall. So, just as a quick overview of the three scenarios, the so this scenario here, again, all of the land is south of 17th Sea. Over on the eastern side, or the right-hand side, coming down to the bottom side, is the earthen levee, so we're not able to build within a certain distance of that levee. As we know, that site was also flooded, so one of the primary questions that we asked Shoemaker to help us understand was to, what can we do to flood-proof the site? And the primary outcome, recommendation from Shoemaker was to raise the site, 12 acres of the site, raise it about eight feet out of the floodplain. So what you're seeing there is a 12-acre development pad, or pod, raised eight feet high, along that front part, the northern part to Main Street. We actually set it back about 100 feet so that we didn't have sort of this landscaping feature come up and closing to Main Street. So, along Main Street now, we have a promenade, trees, walking paths, and the upper left-hand corner would be sort of a dog park. The primary focus of the land use in this redevelopment scenario is multifamily housing, so apartments, so all the buildings with yellow outline around them would be residential buildings. The black that you see would be solar panels, that's another consideration, is that we would like this to be sustainable in some ways in generating its own power. The two smaller buildings on the left have green roofs, that's another option, we're just trying to articulate options of what we'd like to see here. The building in the middle with the orange outline would be mixed use, we'd have some commercial uses on the ground floor of that building and apartments above. And then the last building, sort of the L-shaped, upside-down L-shaped building on the right, would be a long-term hospitality or long-term hotel. We don't see this as feasible right away, but as the university continues on and as UHS potentially expands or brings in more residents, and also as the university built out their healthcare medical campus where the pharmaceutical school is, which is less than a mile east of here, we're anticipating people coming and visiting, doing perhaps research and development, or perhaps a resident at the hospital, or perhaps visiting the university, perhaps staying a month, three, six months, et cetera. So we're programming into this scenario a long-term hotel. And then the rest that you see are parking and circulation in accordance with the square footage that we have built on that site. So that's scenario A. Scenario B came out of some conversations of those stakeholder interviews and public input, and working with some of the local realtors, we understand that there are folks that have businesses in the southern tier that are looking to scale up. You know, they might be in maybe 3,000 to 5,000 square feet, but they're really looking for 8 to 10, maybe 15,000 square feet, and there really aren't that many spaces, if any, in the Binghamton Southern Tier area, Broom County area. So in this case, we were looking at sort of what we call flex space, or industrial flex space, maybe high bay buildings to allow for that space to be utilized, however the tenant would want to be used. Here again, the black that you see on top of those buildings are solar panels, we still are looking for a sustainable focus of redevelopment. And then the building with the red outline on it would be an extended stay hotel, though it is smaller scale, so not as big as scenario A, but we're still seeing potentially a need for an extended stay hotel here. Circulation here includes parking, roads, parking for cars, but also maneuverability and parking for trucks, if that was to be needed. Here again, we are looking at a raised pad, set back from Main Street, that preserved area along the east and southern side, the right and southern part of this image, and then also walking paths around the whole site. In each scenario too, we also reserve space for stormwater management, and that's sort of the colored or darkish area in the lower left-hand corner here. So we're looking to provide amenity along with this flexible space for, say, workers or even anybody in the neighborhood to have an area to walk and stroll. That's scenario B. Scenario C, there's been some conversations in the southern tier about perhaps a sports use facility or a multipurpose event center. So we had on our team, venue strategies, who are experts in this field, and we had them reach out to a whole host of other stakeholders to understand, and people who are interested in this matter, in the Binghamton area, to understand the feasibility. What you're looking at here is about 150,000 square foot building, a multi-event center that could be programmed for a variety of sports uses. In this case, the whole pad is not raised, only where the building is, and the parking lot can remain at the current level that the land is. You'll see, excuse me, one sports field on the south end, it's drawn as a soccer field right now, and so left of that would be stormwater area. What we determined is one building can fit with the associated parking and only one field. In the end, the scenario wasn't desired because there is no room for expansion, so if you wanted a bigger building, we wouldn't, we couldn't do that and have enough parking, or primarily if we wanted more sports fields, there clearly isn't enough space. 27 acres sounds like a lot of space until you have to set aside some land to maintain the levees and provide easements and provide parking, so all the land gets used up fairly quickly. So ultimately, this site was determined not really feasible for anything larger than this NBC concept. So those are the scenarios, and that's a very quick synopsis of what we had done initially over about one year's time with the agency. Then, this project is being funded by the Department of Defense, they have some planning money, and one of the things that we can do is now undertake the State Environmental Quality Review Act review of those three scenarios, and so we were able to continue on as soon as we finished those scenarios and start what we call the CEICER process. If you want to go to the next slide. So, one thing that public entities can do, in this case the agency, are the, is prepare what we call a draft generic environmental impact statement. This is very similar, so if a private developer were to come in and do one of those scenarios, they would have to do what's called an environmental impact statement likely. And an environmental impact statement looks at all, a host of potential impacts that the development might have. In New York State, a public entity can do a generic environmental impact statement, which does some of that in the beginning, and so we are looking at implementing some of the components of the plan that you just saw. And really, the goal is to evaluate, are there any potentially significant adverse impacts related to the implementation of any of those scenarios? So we looked at all three scenarios and a no-build scenario to see, and that's what CEICER asked, are there any potentially significant adverse impacts? And then we looked at the range of alternatives, and we said, well, are there any mitigation measures that we would have to put into place to eliminate any adverse impacts? So why do this? This is a key tool in New York State where an entity like the agency is looking to bring in private development and find a private developer to do this site. It really brings a lot of the information together into one document, as I said, it's a little over 100 pages. The second bullet's key, what we say, is advances the project to a build-ready state. In other words, a private developer would have to come in and do this, but we're doing it ahead of time to make the site more marketable, essentially, for someone to come in and build. Really, we bring all the information into one place, which is really nice, because we just worked for about over a year, and now it's all contained into one document, so anybody can read the efforts of the work, and then it helps guide the fulfillment of the redevelopment scenarios that we just said, focusing largely on redevelopment scenario A. There are other involved agencies that the agency has been coordinating with all along, the DEC, Department of Rental Conservation, we've been working with them all along. The Department of Transportation has been instrumental in providing comments throughout this process, we thank them. Town of Union Planning Department as well, a Town of Union Planning Board too, that should tell you in general, the Town of Union, so the Planning Department and the Planning Board, the supervisor's been involved, which has been very helpful, Joe Moody from Town of Union, the Broom County Planning Department, and also the Village of Johnson City. So these are entities that we worked with in developing those three scenarios and continue to work with as involved agencies in the CEICER process. So there are a lot of checkboxes and checklists that we have to make sure that we undertake through the CEICER process, which is outlined by DEC. I'm not going to go through all of these now, but you can see where we are with the red arrow. We are now holding a public hearing on this document. Tonight is not your only opportunity to provide comment, we're leaving the comment period open until July 4th, and we'll have information at the end of the slide in terms of how you can provide your comments. I'll go over what the next steps are in terms of how we close out this process in a couple slides, other than talk about it here. So, what did we learn? These are all the areas of evaluation that are required when you're doing an environmental impact statement or a generic environmental impact statement. Land use, community services, flooding, infrastructure, et cetera, you can read the list. We don't have the time this evening to go through this 111-page document, but the areas in red we know are of interest, and know are of interest because of the previous public input that we've received so far. Flooding, and Lisa's going to talk about that in just a moment, from Shoemaker Engineering. Traffic and transportation, I'll talk about that. The visual resources, there was some interest in terms of if we have to raise the site, what does it look at, look like, and we actually built some models so we can look at that. Hazardous materials, as I said, we've been working with the Air Force all along as they remediated the site, so we're going to cover those four areas in the next few slides. So, right now, I'll ask Lisa Dolphin from Shoemaker Engineering to walk us through a few slides on what we found on the flooding evaluation.
Okay, thank you Lisa. Again, I'm Lisa Dolphin from Shoemaker Engineering, and we worked closely with Lisa Nagel and Elon Planning on the flooding aspect of the project. And I'd just like to walk you through what we're showing on this schematic. This is an overall schematic with the site identified. The Susquehanna River, the Susquehanna River flows in a northwesterly manner, so what we've also identified on this schematic are the system of levee systems and the flood control protection system around the site. So that green line that you're seeing is the levee system intended to protect the site. Next slide, please. So as part of our analysis, because the project is located within a FEMA-studied reach and has an identified 100-year floodplain and a designated floodway, any development in that area within the floodplain requires an assessment to determine if the project is in compliance with the NFIP requirements, the National Flood Insurance Program requirements. And the National Flood Insurance Program requirements are actually addressed through the Town of Union's local floodplain development ordinance. So that floodplain development permit for any site, any proposed development in this area is actually sought from and issued by the Town of Union. Other items of note, again, are back to the levee system that we saw, that green line on the previous schematic. So that system of levees, closure structures, and pumps is actually a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers flood control structure. Unfortunately, that flood control structure is not an accredited flood control structure. It does not meet the Freeboard standards. So the current Freeboard standards under the Army Corps and the FEMA requirements are that the 100-year storm event, the water surface profile is three feet below the top of the flood control system. So that levee system has to be three feet above the 100-year water surface profile, and it does not meet that standard. Next slide, please. So as part of the work that we did to determine if this proposed development is in compliance with FEMA and the Town of Union floodplain development requirements, required study, a hydraulic analysis. The first thing that we did in order to determine the FEMA compliance was we obtained the FEMA model that was prepared for the current preliminary, the preliminary study that was completed a few years ago. Results of that analysis were kind of modified because we have a site that, the BAE site that's no longer there, so we took that HECRAZ model and we updated it to identify existing conditions. So existing conditions, no BAE site, as is on that, on the first lead-in slide that showed the site undeveloped. That served as our baseline or our existing conditions model. And then we looked at the proposed development, and as Lisa had indicated, we looked at that eight-foot pad, basically an eight-foot-high fill pad under scenario A, and we modeled that as the proposed condition. And in order to determine FEMA compliance, what FEMA requires is that you look at the existing condition model and you compare it to the proposed condition model, and you identify any increases in water surface elevations. And the result of that study indicated that there was no increase in water surface elevation. And we looked at that under two different scenarios. We looked at it with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer flood control structures in place because they're actually, they're indicated on the effective flood insurance rate maps as providing the necessary protection. So we looked at it under that scenario, again, no increase in 100-year water surface profile, so can be permitted through the Town of Union, through their floodplain ordinance. And then we looked at it without the Army Corps flood control structure in place because the preliminary maps that are, again, are not effective, so they're not used for floodplain development currently, however, they are the best available data, the Army Corps flood control structures of the levee system are not shown as providing protection. So we looked at that scenario as well. And again, when we looked at, for the 100-year storm event, both an existing condition model prepared it to the proposed condition model, which is modeling the build-out of scenario A, there's no increase in water surface elevation. So under both scenarios, the scenario, I'm sorry, excuse me, under both conditions, with the core study, the core flood control structures in place, and with them not in place, both scenarios meet FEMA requirements and could be permitted. So I think that's, you know, a really important So I think that's, you know, a, a really important message with regards to development of the site, is that it could be, it could, uh, be progressed and meet the Town of Union floodplain requirements and FEMA requirements. Next slide. Now, we're all aware that, uh, the flood in 2011 was, uh, a historic flood. It, it exceeded the 1% or the 100-year flood event. It was somewhere between a 100, a 200-year flood and a 500-year flood. So that, that, that storm event is not regulated by FEMA. However, we felt it was prudent to look at that, um, instance, because we know there's going to be public concern over, what if we get a repeat of the 2011 flood? So again, we looked at another, ran another HECRAAS model where we mimicked the 2011 flood, which, which was a, a greater discharge rate. And what we found when we looked at, when we compared both the existing condition model and the proposed condition model, was that there was a negligible flood depth increase of less than four inches. So again, what I really want to focus on is, in order for this, uh, proposed development to be permitted or receive a floodplain development permit by the Town of Union and be in compliance with the NFIP requirements, um, as proposed, that scenario A where you're, you're adding, you know, an eight-foot-high fill pad essentially to, to bring up, uh, the development area is in compliance with the Town of Union floodplain ordinance standards. A couple of things that will have to be considered when the project does move, uh, into a, more of a final design stage is that New York State Building Code currently requires the first floor elevation to be set two feet above the base flood elevation. In that area, the base flood elevation is about 835, so you're looking at a first floor elevation of about 837. And the other item that I would like to note is that, um, you know, there, there would be additional pumping systems, would be recommended in that area, just to eliminate any waters that can get behind that flood wall on the protected side and get it out, um, from the site. Another item I'd like to know, Lisa touched on this earlier in the presentation, is, and that was, uh, proposed stormwater management for the site. And the proposed stormwater management on the site will also provide some flood mitigation benefits as well.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
So, um, the next topic of, of some interest is traffic and transportation. We had, uh, GTS Consulting, uh, help us, um, analyze and do a traffic study along 17C. Um, Brendan, I think this one's, um, animated, so if you just want to bring up the circles of, uh, there you are, perfect. So we had GTS look at the traffic along 17C, and we had them look at specific inter, all the intersections, which are all indicated by the orange circles, so from the Home Depot entrance, um, all the way past, uh, 201, uh, to, towards the hospital. And, uh, we also had them look at crash data. Next slide, please. So, right now, the, under the existing conditions, uh, in, at the intersections, um, so, some of the intersections that have longer delays currently, so this is under existing conditions, meaning there's no building on the, on the 27 acres or on the BAE site as of yet, um, there's a little bit longer delays in the morning peak hour at the, on the northbound ramps getting on 201. Little bit longer delays in the evening at Riverside Drive, at, uh, and also at, at Fifth Street. Other, all other intersections that you saw are operating at a, um, a good level of service. So, under the findings, and there's, uh, many, many pages on traffic within the GEIS if you have interest, but, uh, so right now, um, it was recommended that singles, signals at intersections with longer delays be adjusted to shift by 10 seconds of green time from east-to-west movement to northbound movement. So that'll give a little bit more time to move the cars, um, moving those directions by just adjusting the, the traffic signal timing. Um, the capacity analysis reveals that the site redevelopment, looking at, um, all the scenarios, but primarily focused on scenario A, will have little impact on traffic operations, um, and very minor increases at those traffic intersections, which could be mitigated by the shift in the timing of the first bullet. Uh, the site redevelopment is suspected to have low to moderate trip generation during the peak commuter hours, uh, so this is good news. Um, and all, overall, the area does not have a high accident rate as compared to statewide averages, if you look at the accident rate in terms of understanding safety concerns in the area, but we weren't seeing any type of, uh, increase or high amount of traffic accidents in this area. So in the visual resources, currently, um, if you've been by the site, or we had a picture early on, it's a grass, largely a grass field, uh, with, um, residences and neighborhoods adjacent, um, with 17C along the north side. Uh, we have the earth and levy along the east and south side, um, of the site. Um, and then we have views to businesses along 17C to the north, um, and of course, um, the 201, and then, of course, the power plant, uh, to the south side of the property. Um, as we mentioned, we wanted to, um, elevate the development pad, uh, as the most cost-effective way to flood-proof the site. Um, as we mentioned, that was about a 12-acre pad elevated eight feet. Uh, the maximum height of the proposed building is four stories. Uh, that's a typo there, it says four feet, but that should be four stories. Um, and so, uh, we looked at that, modeled that, and I'll show you some images in a second. But the other pieces of mitigating any visual impact is looking at, uh, a specific kind of lighting, what we call dark skylighting, so it's cut off, it doesn't go up into the sky, it only shines down on the ground. Um, as you saw in the scenarios, we would have vegetated buffers and tree plantings along the front, along Main Street, a dog park, a walking path, so it, it would be very park-like looking. Um, and then we would look at, uh, materials on those buildings that wouldn't, um, reflect sunlight, uh, to avoid any type of, uh, you know, reflection there. If you want to go to the next slide. So there's a couple of images that we had, uh, we took that redevelopment scenario A that we looked at earlier and built it out into a model. Um, and so here, as it says, um, this is site redevelopment scenario A, from the main entrance in 17C. So we're elevated a little bit above Main Street so that you can see into the site. You could see, obviously, the road going in with the median in the middle, uh, just to the left of that would be a walking path. So here again, the development pad, this is showing a development pad at eight feet in height. Um, those lines that you see coursing through the middle, they're actual sort of, what we call the topographic lines of the elevation lines. And we have the walking path and street tree buffers along the front. So the idea is that we wanted to set that eight-foot foot pad back a little bit, about 100 feet from Main Street and the sidewalk on Main Street, so we didn't have sort of this looming, um, earth and mass that close to, to Main Street. You see the hotel, um, in the, in the apartment buildings there with some interior circulation. If you go to the next slide, this is now, you're down at Main Street. This is looking at eye levels if you are a pedestrian, uh, and here again, that building that you see there is set up on that eight-foot pad. Uh, so, uh, in looking at these models, we could see that it isn't a, um, a, that much of a visual impact, um, and, and it really blends well, uh, with the existing landscape as we come through there. Next slide, we have one more image here. Yeah, so this is now looking back, uh, west, uh, towards the Home Depot. The building that you're looking at there would be the hotel, um, and the walking path along Main Street, um, coming, um, towards us. Uh, so we're basically almost at the intersection of, uh, or the, the, um, traffic at the intersection at 201 there, um, and, and looking back at the property. Okay, one more topic area, uh, and then we'll, um, provide the information on our next steps, so on hazardous materials. Um, right now, the site is listed as a Class II inactive hazardous disposal site, uh, for historic soil, groundwater, and gas contamination. The agency has been working, um, with the Air Force and the DEC to, um, as, as the Air Force has remediated the site, uh, the intention is to move it off of that Class II classification. Um, the site has undergone remediation of on-site contaminants, uh, in terms of groundwater, groundwater monitoring access. Um, there's just been some additional remediate investigations, uh, and, uh, there's some, uh, notification of, um, being aware of lead paint, asbestos, as we go forward. Um, if you go to the next slide, slide. Uh, go back, sorry. One more slide. Um, so what we did find is that the redevelopment scenarios, because we're going to raise the structures, again, with this eight feet, uh, that we will have amenities above the current ground level, um, and so that's to ensure that new residents, users will not come in contact with the remediated areas. I will say, just not on the slide, uh, just as a little bit of background, uh, over time, the Air Force is committed to continuing to monitor the groundwater, uh, and we've worked with them to preserve access to the groundwater wells. Um, if we do need to move the groundwater well so that they can continue to monitor, uh, we'll be able to do that. Um, all the buildings are gone, uh, of course, uh, the agency now is also responsible for bringing in at least two feet of soil across the site underneath where the asphalt parking areas were, because on, where the asphalt was, that soil underneath has not been remediated. Um, and the last piece on hazardous ways is that, um, as buildings are built, it may need, um, some vapor intrusion, uh, construction materials, very similar to what was required of the buildings in downtown Binghamton, um, and we may need that. Uh, but, uh, so we're moving forward with DEC and Air Force in completing what we call a record of decision, uh, that gets filed, uh, with the DEC, um, and with that, we'll be able to, uh, move forward with the site and a site management plan. So our GEIS findings, next slide, please. Um, this is largely what I was just going over. So the agency is going to work with the, um, with the Air Force and be responsible for implementing, maintaining, uh, and monitoring the remedial action. So, an environmental easement will be with DEC, will have the soil cover, as I, as I noted, um, vapor, uh, soil vapor response, uh, so that would be the soil vapor intrusion. There'll be annual inspections, uh, to make sure that the, um, land use controls are being met, um, and there'll be periodic reviews required by DEC. So that's what the agency will have to do then going forward. The Air Force will still be involved, um, with this area. They're going to continue to monitor the groundwater, um, they'll look at, um, the soil vapor sampling investigations, um, they'll work with the agency on that prior to any new building construction, um, and they'll complete their five-year reviews. Next slide, please. Okay, so, um, next steps, uh, so we're going to, um, accept public comment, as I mentioned, through July 4th, and then with that, what we'll prepare is what we call the final GEIS, or the FGEIS. And in that final GEIS, we'll respond to any comments that we receive. We'll then prepare what's called a findings statement. This findings statement will be shared with all the involved agencies, and the findings statement will, um, uh, list, look at each of those topic areas. And the importance of that findings statement is that last bullet. As long as new development is consistent with the findings statement, SEACER is deemed complete. Um, and it really does save significant dollars, um, and brings, this is the point of bringing the site to sort of what we call a build-ready state. Um, if something comes in that's different than what we're shown, um, and isn't consistent with the findings statement, um, a developer could do, um, an additional analysis to coincide with this body of work. Uh, so, in most regards, SEACER will not have to start from the beginning, it could just tack on to the analysis that was done to all of this body of work. So, um, here's the information, um, if you want to jot it down, um, it is being recorded by the agency, um, and will be available on their Facebook page post this presentation. So public comments must be submitted in writing, um, to be incorporated in what we call the final GEIS. Um, that pro, public comment period closes on Saturday, July 4th at 5:00 PM. Um, so you can submit online, and there's a link to a Survey Monkey where you are able to input your, your question, uh, questions or comments, or by mail, um, and this is the agency's address. It's the agency, Broom County IDA slash LLC. Attention Brendan O'Brien, Community Development Specialist, 5 College, South College Drive, Binghamton, New York, 13905. And a copy of the DEGIS, the body of work, uh, that we've been reviewing this evening, can be reviewed at the agency's website, which is HTTPS colon slash slash theagency-ny.com/economic-development-resources. Just for those of you who are listening in, HTTPS colon dash slash slash theagency-ny.com/economic-development-resources.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Um, with that being said, uh, we would be open to taking public comments. Uh, if you're interested in making a comment, please unmute yourself and then identify yourself, the first name, last name, and then if you're representing any organization or entity, please identify that organization as well. So I'll repeat that one more time, um, for anybody who may have missed it. You are taking and open to public comment at this time, so if you do want to submit any comment, please unmute yourself, state your name, full name, and if you're with an organization or entity, uh, please identify that organization or entity. Well, I will take that as meaning nobody has any comments to make. If you want to submit written comments, once again, the, the, how you would do that and submit it are located on the slide on the screen. So there's a Survey Monkey link, or you can submit it by mail, uh, to our organization, the agency, at 5 South College Drive. Um, so with that, uh, thank you, everybody, for taking your time to come out and, and listen to what we are doing with the, the site, and hopefully we'll see some more good stuff to come with it. Thanks a lot, have a good night.
Thanks, Brendan. Bye.
Bye. Thanks, you. Oh, uh-